Are you ready?
I am recording.
Excellent. I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 15th, 2020 Duval City Council meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Clerk, would you please show the flag for the flag salute? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And clerk, would you please take the roll?
As soon as I grab my cheat sheet. Councilmember Bernicki.
Here.
Councilmember Okerlander, or, sorry. My bad, I went the wrong direction. Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And with that, under additions and corrections to the agenda, under consent, please add payroll for December 4th, 2020 in the amount of $312,755.27 and claims for December 1st, 2020 through December 14th, 2020 in the amount of $111,489.64. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved?
Mayor Partem moved. Adoption of the agenda, do we have a second? We have a motion by Mayor Partem, a second by Councilmember Hoag. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And now we have several items on the consent agenda that were a second touch. And so in order to place them on the consent agenda with Mayor Partem's approval, we would need a motion to suspend council procedures in section 5.6 requiring additional review and finalize all items within the consent agenda. So I would be happy to entertain a motion from council to suspend the rolls for the items in the consent agenda.
Councilmember Remington, mayor, I move that we suspend our three-text rule for the items under consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Alright, so we have a mayor partem made the motion, councilmember Henry seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved?
Do you have a second?
Second, McHenry.
So Mayor Partem Remington moved, councilmember McHenry seconded adoption of this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will move on to comments from the audience. I believe Clerk Wykoff did receive one earlier today, or, I'm sorry, earlier this week.
Yes, I believe, yes, it was received this afternoon, I believe. To summarize, this is an email received from Dr. Gangler of Duval Veterinary Hospital. In summary, it says, Dear Duval City Council Members, I would like to request review of the municipal codes required for small business renovation requirements within the city of Duval. Duval Veterinary Hospital is expanding to meet the needs of our growing community, and we have utilized all the space we currently occupy. We are planning a remodel in 2021 and have been going through the early stages of permitting with Duval's building and planning department. During our initial reviews, we were informed that although our proposed addition is small, the current municipal code requires that we meet the development standard of a much larger development. The financial burden of these requirements is making remodeling and expanding our practice very challenging and makes updating or expanding small business in Duval difficult. I'm attaching a memo from our architect to explain more in detail. We both feel that the Duval codes may inadvertently shape the types of businesses and buildings that can remain in Duval and feel it's something you should be made aware of. There was an attachment, and both the email and attachment were forwarded to council earlier this afternoon.
Thank you. And is there anyone on the line that would like to speak this evening? And if so, the clerk will unmute the participants. And if you would provide your name and address, you'll have three minutes to speak to whatever topic you wish.
Hello, everybody. This is Deshawn Rents, just speaking on behalf of the Duval Chamber of Commerce. I got the opportunity to come and sit in on the meeting today, so thanks for doing everything that you do on behalf of our city. I actually understood Dr. Gangler's situation as well. We discussed it at our board meeting. And I just think it's a good example of how everybody's sort of feeling the pinch right now. And, you know, we're all looking forward to better future times ahead. And I think that anything that we can do on behalf of each other to support each other, to help lower any cost burdens associated with normal business, you know, is useful and appreciated to the degree that we can. But we don't have any announcements to speak of, and we really appreciate all the work that we've been doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Going once? Twice? Alright, we'll go ahead and move on. And I just realized that there was one item that I forgot to ask, and that was under the agendas, if any council members would like to speak, I know councilmember Napland, and then I talked about an issue earlier. So councilmember McHenry, anyone else? Okay, I'll add you on there. On just a second. Alright, so moving on to scheduled items, mayor's report. Do want to let folks know that, actually, this is a big kudos to Mr. Lenishewski and his wastewater treatment plant crew. Yet again, we've received an award for the operations of the wastewater treatment plant. So I think they all deserve a big kudos. There's, there are a couple of years where we didn't get it, and since Mr. Lenishewski's been back as our director and helping lead the group, they've achieved it yet again. So that's a big accomplishment and very appreciative of their work. Also, just want to note that councilmember Napland and I met with Representatives Lisa Callen, Representative Bill Ramos, and Senator Mark Mullet last Friday evening to talk about our legislative agenda. It was a really great conversation, and the one thing that we'll need to add just at the beginning of the year is, well, we all know the Public Works Trust Fund is something we advocate for every year. They are suggesting we put it on the formal agenda again this year because there's, you know, some suspicions that they'll try and sweep that again. Tomorrow, the Sound Cities Association Board meets. And really, it's been, the last week has been just a lot of cleanup and getting ready for the end of the year and trying to get budget done and stay up to date on negotiations, et cetera. I do want to let folks know that that the police have arrested a suspect on the arson on the 143rd over the weekend. So there was a large piece of construction equipment set on fire, and they believe they have the suspect in custody. So that's good news, and of course, great work by our police department. With that, I will be taking a little bit of family time towards the end of the year, so my availability will be limited. And I just, it's been the year, so the time off for a week or so is necessary, but I will be available for, obviously, for staff and folks when things come up. I just will not be keeping my normal office schedule. So with that, I think that's all I have to report right now. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to councilmember Napland.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a great conversation with Mayor Okerlander, and she helped me, you know, try to figure out how to approach getting approval from council, not super formally, but semi-formally. When, when I was in the ETP meeting this morning, several of the jurisdictions said, oh, I can't vote. I haven't received approval from council. It hasn't been presented to council during a council meeting. And I thought, hmm, I don't know what our procedure is, and so I felt a little unsure. So I, it did get approved. I chose not to vote, just in case. But I've sent you a copy of the final version that was approved by the group. And one thing that they were hoping is that they could get a somewhat formal nod from each of the cities. So they could, when they send a letter along with the legislative priorities, they can say that it was supported by all of these cities. So that's the purpose of making a more formal motion of support of the ETP legislative priorities. And I sent that via email to all councilmembers. So I'm just curious if anyone has any comments or concerns, or if I can just go ahead and make a motion. The only thing I brought up in the email was one of the items was for the road usage charge. I think it's been called different things over time. It's basically where, you know, instead of, possibly instead of a gas tax, they would keep track of how many miles you drive each year, and you would get charged more on miles driven versus your gas usage. And, you know, that can be semi-controversial, and I wasn't sure if our community was ready for us to jump on the bandwagon and say, yes, let's do that. So I think we need a little more information and more community input. So I'm open if other people, you know, had any other concerns, or maybe you don't have that concern, and I'm, you know. So maybe I don't see any hands raised of any other ideas, so I will just go ahead.
Let's make the motion.
Yes, I make a motion to support the 2021 Eastside Transportation Partnership Legislative Priorities with the caveat that council and our citizens would need more information regarding the road usage charge funding mechanism before supporting that specific item as a priority.
Do we have a second?
Second, McHenry.
Alright. Does council want to discuss this item? Okay, I'm not seeing any, and I just want to say councilmember Napland's jumped into this committee after I was on it for, oh gosh, I think 10 years, and is picking up speed and knowledge pretty quickly. And it's really nice to have someone else from the city participating in these transportation issues. And so she's definitely put a lot of time into it already, takes a lot to get up to speed, and it's much appreciated. So with that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick update. One of the committees I serve on for SCA is King Conservation District. And I thought they put together some slides, and they've got a lot of transition happening right now. But one of them was their COVID-19 responses, and I thought it would be interesting for you to hear some of the things that they've done this year. They always have a plant sale, and this year they made it a drive-through plant sale, and they actually had really great participation. They set up a Farm Help hotline. They were able to give $100,000 to Harvest Against Hunger. They had online workshops. They developed, they have a program for equipment rentals for small farms because of that large cost of new farmers getting up and running. So they developed COVID protocols to allow that program to continue. And they also have an amazing program for culturally relevant seed starts. Because of COVID, the location they usually do that at was not going to allow them access. So a bunch of staff members actually took all the seeds and started them in their own homes, and it allowed the program to continue on. So I thought that was really great, and I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Thank you. Alright, move on. Do we have any council committee reports? And these will definitely be getting going next in the new year, when budget's done, and we get Public Works Committee and everyone up and running again. So we'll move on to administration update. Ms. Thomas?
My gift to you for the end of the year is I don't have a report for administration. I know how long our meeting is, so I'm happy holidays.
Thank you. And moving on to our update from Fire District 45.
Well, that's a hard act to follow because it makes anything that I'm giving as a gift look like an ugly Christmas sweater or something. Thanks, Laura. So, good evening, mayor and council and citizens. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of information about the fire district. To begin with, calls, I think earlier in the year when the pandemic started, I mentioned that calls had slowed down. And interesting, regionally, we were like 30% behind where we were. Well, we have since caught that pace, and we are now back on average. Probably forecasted to do about 1,100 or a little more calls at the end of the year, and so far 50 in the month of December. And depending on what kind of weather holds in the next few weeks, we know how that can go. So we'll wait and see how that is. Now, related to the pandemic, I've shared with you over the last few months that, you know, while there's an uptick in positive tests throughout the county, we've been flat, you know, here locally, and that's been a really good thing. And I think it's because people are doing the right things. And I can tell you that moving around through the city and the store, gas station, et cetera, I'm very pleased seeing what I see because people are being very responsible, and thanks for that because I think that does make a difference. Related to that, I serve on several committees and task force with King County EMS, as well as a local task force with our immediate neighbors in the fire districts. And we meet twice a week to talk about different things. And I'm happy to report that King County EMS will be administering vaccinations to our emergency responders as early as next week. And so I think that's going to help us because if we can keep our responders healthy, it makes it easier for us to do our job to help the community as well. So we're very excited about that. So related to the pandemic, we have to change the way we do business a little bit. And I was very pleased that one of our chaplains, Scott Thompson, sponsored us with a food drive, a local pickup food drive. And so members of the community, they had a bag and flagged it. And then our, our fire equipment went through and picked it up, and we benefited the Catholic Church, the food pantry there. And quite a bit of food was collected. You might have seen the photos online. But, you know, in times like this, it's, I really appreciate the fact that people help others. And, you know, one of our mottos in the fire district is that, you know, help us help you. And boy, our people sure have, and I'm so grateful for that. So even in the pandemic, when everything's going crazy, people still look out for one another. So that was very refreshing. We opened our new station yesterday. So the east station out at 31813 Northeast Cherry Valley Road is up and running. And we have 24-hour staffing there for an engine and aid responses. And unfortunately, we couldn't have an open house, or we've been cutting, or any of those types of things. But we had the crew there. They hoisted the flag and made the traditional acknowledgement to dispatch that we were open and ready for business. And ironically, 10 minutes later, they ran their first call. So we are up and running. We're very proud of that. We'll look for an opportunity for an open house when the pandemic eases, and people's comfort's a little better about being in public. So we'll keep you posted on that. I think I mentioned to you before that our deputy chief position is still vacant, and we will be posting that after the holiday and hopefully have somebody on board on or before April 1st. And I'll keep you posted on that. So if you know anybody good and qualified, then please send them our way. We're interested in talking with them. Also, we just replaced one aid car, our main aid car that runs out of the headquarters station downtown, as well as a new one for the new east station. And what's really important, there's a couple of things. One, that we regularly replace our vehicles. And then two, this is probably a cutting edge of technology with safety for us. And Horton is the manufacturer, and the safety equipment that's on there is, for the first time in a rig that I've been affiliated with, they've got safety harnesses for our patient attendants in the back. And they, they work around the shoulders. It's a two-point harness system. And so, you know, in the past, when you're caring for a patient, you're unrestrained back there, and it's really dangerous, especially if you're hurrying trying to get to a hospital. So it's revolutionary, and it's going to make our people safer. We also have lift assist cots and loading system, so to save backs and everything like that. Some of our geriatric patients require two and three personnel to sometimes do it safely, and sometimes even that's not enough. So this, this will help us load patients. The aid cars have a 360-degree camera that sees all the way around in the blind spots of the vehicle, which is really safe. So if we've got people in and around kits, or potholes, or any debris in the road, things like that, we're able to see it from a camera system that's inside. And then aside from airbags, there's a new ventilation system that goes in the patient compartment. And where that's important is right now in this pandemic, to be able to circulate that air and maintain airflow. We now have a system in there that is unlike anything I've ever experienced in my 38 years. So I'm very pleased with that. They look very similar, but if you see the new truck going down the road, we'll look for an opportunity when the pandemic eases to get it out in public and let everybody look inside and out. But we're appreciative of that, and we're grateful. The last thing, before I take any questions, I would just like to say I wish everybody a very safe and happy holiday. Next year is coming, and we are all looking forward to it. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions from any of the council or the mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have anything for Chief Burke? Alright, seeing none. Thank you, and happy holidays. And again, congratulations on your new station. Thanks for having me tonight.
Absolutely.
So we will move on to our first presentation of Duval Foundation for the Arts, presented by Elizabeth Hill from DFA. Welcome, DFA. And I do know that besides Ms. Hill, we have a few other members of DFA online. I can recognize two off the bat, Deanna Hobbs and Tony Shuler. I'm not sure who else is here, but welcome and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, mayor. We really appreciate being here and having time to talk with you and the council. And thanks to Jody for getting us set up. I wanted to, or the board asked me if I would please, in addition to going over our report that's due to you today, if I would mention some things that DFA has done this year, and I can be quick about it. But one of the things that we, you know, for arts organizations in general, the pandemic has been very, very hard for art organizations across the whole Puget Sound. So one of the things the board is proud of is that they are still up and running. And also that they were able to do an online auction fundraiser this year and issue some scholarships. And we got a grant from Four Culture for operating in 2021. And we will also, the board is also sponsoring our, one of our fellow nonprofits, which is CCT, in the online performance of Anne of Green Gables that'll be coming up this weekend, and we hope a lot of people can, can catch that. We also, this year, as you know, got our prop, you know, we got our property at the end of last calendar year, and then had our big property event, like really literally, I think that was the last party that I went to before COVID shut, shut everybody down. And so we just wanted to mention that we appreciate that the mayor and councilmember Remington were there, and councilmember Lambert, and also that Four Culture's executive director, Brian Carter, and his deputy came. And then since that time, with regard to the project, we have finished all the site work, or had all the site work finished either through Wes, our contract with Wescott, or some additional contracts with Wescott, and also some direct contracts that we had. So now, when you go down there, I hope you'll see that the lawn is in, the sidewalks, and we also did some landscaping with big boulders down there so people can go sit and enjoy the space. We have an irrigation system. We have a new electrical system that is very robust to help with outdoor performances. So we're pretty excited about that. In the report that I sent you on behalf of the board, this is kind of a learning experience for me doing this on Zoom. And so I apologize to, in this regard, that the way I set the report up, it was in folders, and the folders had the names of the elements that were required in the report, and then the file names were more specific. But now, it's, the way it comes to you, it's kind of lumped together. So next time, I'm going to put the name of the folder on each of the sections, so it's maybe a little easier to understand. But what you should see at the beginning is an overview of the report, which kind of is organized in the way that the extension for the permit for the big white tent has a requirement for this report. And we're happy to brief you on what's going on anyway, but that's why we're here at this particular time. And, oh, I want to apologize that we didn't come this summer. We just, it was just too much with everything going on with COVID. But now, we're kind of like everybody, getting used to the new normal. So you'll see, it should look like a a table, and in the table, you ask for the updated project description. So I may have gone a little overboard. It wasn't my intention. But I gave you the whole, well, the picture of the new, what the new building would look like. And also, I gave you the entire report from our architect, LMN. So people could either have the choice of just looking at the picture and seeing generally what the architect has, you know, come up with based on their work with us and our stakeholders. Or if you really wanted to dive into it, you could look through the whole report, which also contains even things like the cost estimate from, from the architect on. It doesn't have the soft costs in it, but the costs of construction are all there. Okay, let's see what else I want to tell you. Okay, so that's that first part. And then the budget for the project, that should be coming, that should be in the next part. And what you should see is I took the LMN costs, and then I added to it things that LMN excluded from their cost estimate. And so when you add that all up together, all those items, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this. It's $22,876,000. And then the next thing you should see is our project timeline. Let me see how I'm going to get there. I'm looking at this on my computer while I'm talking to you, so apologies. And we have the graphic, oh, we have a graphic in here that shows that once we raise the money for the building, about how long it will take to construct the building, which is 18 to 24 months. We also have a picture of what the site looks like right now because that, I think, is important for you to see that for us, we've gone through this big phase of work. The site is there. We own it. It has all the utilities installed, not only for outdoor performances today, but, you know, all the power and sewer water storm are installed for the future building as well. And then I also included just a copy of the deed to the property, so you can see that we actually do, after all these years, finally own the property. Okay, so then, this was something in terms of the grants that we, the funding that we already have, let's, that's one of the things you should see now. And if you look at this, you'll see that grants and other funding already obtained. There's 200,000 in professional services, and that doesn't count, the project manage, does not count the project management services that Connie and I have been providing. You'll see that Wescott Homes in kind donation to us is $742,482. And we're very appreciative to Wescott Homes for that. True Value has pledged 20,000. We had another architect before that donated 15,000. And then there's some smaller but very important amounts here from the community. And then we also have some pretty significant grants from Four Culture that we've had for this project, and also from the Rotary. So total donations today, to date, not counting the donated PM services are 1,601,792 dollars. And that also doesn't count the city's work in doing all the road frontage because we've never been able to figure out how to to show that plus all the work that, you know, the city did just in terms of working on the tri-party agreement. We'd like to come up with a way to quantify that, but we, we haven't been able to so far. Or maybe better said, the city hasn't been able to so far. Which our CPA, by the way, tells me is totally normal. Longer term and future targets. So we've taken the amount of money we have, the amount of money that we think the project's going to cost. And then the difference is just over 21 million. And then we've kind of divided that into chunks, like what we think we maybe could get from corporate and art foundations, what possibly could come from government entities and what we need, what we're thinking in terms of cash donation. And in kind donations, which in kind for anyone who might not know, that means like things people could donate, like when True Value donated paint, they, they've pledged $20,000 worth of paint to us. So that's an in-kind donation. So the next couple of things that are coming up, there's a grant application that we're looking at pretty hard here for back to Four Culture that's just come out that we're taking a hard look at and thinking about applying for. We also are going to install a sign and you should see, well, I think we had some problems trying to get this sign to print within the packet. Jody, where did we land on that at the end?
I'm sorry, say that one more time, that what?
That's that sign that I tried to put in there, did we?
I think it's in there. Yeah.
Okay.
I think it did end up in there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So if you see that our intention is to put up a sign at the site so that that would link back to our website, they would explain how all of us are working on this together and what it is that we wish to accomplish and would refer people to the website, which would be easier to update. And I just got notice from the city today that we got our permit to, you know, order and install that sign. And then our board, we have some new members on the board, which we're really excited about. And they're have a lot of good energy and with COVID, I want to say that it's been quite a thing for us and other arts organizations to think about how do you effectively raise money for any kind of a nonprofit during a pandemic, you know, when you can't normally get together like we did in February and do the kinds of things that we, that we would normally do at parties and things like that. So we're, and, and also like, how do we deliver our artistic services to the community when we can't necessarily get everybody together and do a big performance? So we're working quite a bit over the next, and we're going to be focused on the, in the next quarter of 2021 on thinking that through as well, because we don't think that through 2021, it looks like we're still going to be dealing with some level of this pandemic. And so we're exploring how we're going to do events and also fundraisers. Let me see where that brings us. That brings us to the draft business plan. And I do want to say that all of these things are kind of where we were. They all have to mesh, mesh together. So all of these things were, are kind of pre-pandemic concepts. And that's what I'm talking about us looking at resiliency in the first quarter of next year and how that informs all of this. Because our business plan includes gatherings and public, I mean, big gatherings. So we've just got to, hopefully this is all going to be behind us, but it's something we are mindful of. So what you're going to see in here is we already have costs because we did this project in phases for a number of reasons. And one of the things that we've learned is we we expected it, but I guess we didn't quite totally know how big our water bill was going to be. But as we've learned about that, we've got various fixed costs like insurance and our water bill. We're going to have other kinds of bills, property tax. And so you'll see here that for this year, we're expecting that just owning that property is going to cost us like $7,600 roughly this year in operating expenses. And then next year, it'll go up towards $20,000. And one of the things that we're doing is we're applying for a nonprofit tax exemption, which is really important for us. It will hopefully significantly reduce our property taxes. Let's see. And then looking for, looking, you know, into the future, looking at how we would develop revenue to pay for these ongoing operational expenses. These are some of the things our board is thinking, considering, including membership dues, online fundraisers, similar to what we did in 2020. Possible time ticketed events like museums have where we still would invite the public to things, but they would go through in small groups and also drive-in events, which we're pretty excited about because of the layout of the parking lot that, that we did together and that the city owns and we can use. It's kind of nicely tiered for a drive-in events. So just thought I'd mention that. And then for the business plan itself, I mean, this is very rough and what we've given to Four Culture in the past of what we think it's would take after the building was built to operate it every year. And you can see it's, you know, it's expensive. It's about $200,000 a year. And for that reason, it's really important for us to be able to have public assembly and by public assembly, I mean, big, you know, groups and have events there. Of course, the focus is arts, but to pay the arts organizations typically don't pencil with just art. You have to have other kinds of rental income to be able to operate an arts facility. So let's see. So then that takes us to the financial page, which should be, I think the last page in our, in your packet, which basically we just lay out the costs that you've seen before, what we're going to need in terms of grants and, I mean, sorry, what we have so far and what we still need. So that's a little bit of a repeat of information, but I was trying to present it all this information in the format that was requested in the grant, in the permit extension. So I kind of reformatted it there. So if there's, if there are questions that I can answer, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Councilmember Lengel.
I just want to say I am so thankful that you did this because technically you didn't have to come to council. So this is really above and beyond, given the circumstances. And I think this is a really strong attempt to address what we were hoping for. And I know, you know, at these early stages of projects, there's lots of estimating. But the important thing is that you're really getting more in the weeds of thinking through what this is going to mean, both in terms of, you know, what you can do for the community as well as what is going to take in community support. So I just wanted to congratulate you on this submission and I'm just, I'm just, the candor, the effort, I, I just, I just really appreciate it. And you know, the, the property tax exemption stuff can be a little tricky, but I know it can also be, I know performing arts is one of the categories. And so it's really one of those things of, you know, just getting together enough of a strategy to document and show some activity, you know, I mean, you know, you've talked about doing, using the property just sort of for this open air kind of stuff. And you know, that shows the arts activity. So you, you will, by doing some of those things, you will have the, the, the information to show that you are an active going concern, even if you're primarily a volunteer organization. So again, congratulations.
Thank you very much, council member. I appreciate it. And I'm sure the board does as well. It's been a tough year.
Any other council members want to provide feedback? All right. Well, I know DFA has always been able to pivot and find new ways of doing things with every challenge that's come forward. And it's, you know, especially during the pandemic, to see you guys continue to move forward is really exciting. And I hope that one day we do have that arts facility in our community. So keep up the hard work. You know, you've got a lot of support individually from people personally on this call and you know, just keep going. You're, you're doing great. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I would just like to ask the council favorably consider our permit extension. I don't know. And also our board would like to wish you all happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you too.
Thank you for everything that you guys have done through this pandemic and to keep the city afloat.
You're welcome. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
And so we will move on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation on King County Growth Management Targets.
Hi, everybody. My name's Rebecca Maskin. I work in regional planning for King County. I just want to check in with Laura. I'm not sure if you would like to introduce this or if I should just get going.
I'll just let you get going. We have a long agenda, but I did want to just say that I've been working with Rebecca since mid-October on kind of growth targets and buildable lands. And we've had really good interactions and conversations, our meetings. I feel like we're making progress for our small little regional caucus. Thank you, Rebecca. Take it away.
Okay, I'm going to bring up a presentation that I've got here. Okay, let's see how this goes. Okay, looks like I'm sharing. So thank you so much for having myself and my supervisor, Director of Regional Planning Lauren Smith here today. So happy to give you the roadshow of CPPs and growth targets, which we are currently updating in support of the eventual periodic update of the comprehensive plan, which is due in 2024. I understand that Laura has already presented to you and given you some of the background on that process overall. So I'm going to kind of jump into the mix specific to the growth targets bit. So my plan is to talk a little bit about our process for creating growth targets, get into some of our initial or preliminary kind of target ranges that we've developed and talk a little bit about cities' performance relative to the target, just to give a little context and hopefully that'll think, get your ins training about how to think about the growth targets. So just want to start off with some general points about what growth targets are. Growth targets are in the countywide planning policies in King County. So as a piece of the countywide planning policies, they are a policy statement about the number of housing units and jobs that each jurisdiction is planning for in their comprehensive plan. And as I said, the next one will be updated in 2024 as the big periodic update. Each jurisdiction in King County, the county included, has a role in accommodating growth under the Growth Management Act. And this is really the first step in, in thinking about the cop plan updates and in terms of the, the amount of growth that you'll be accommodating in the next 20-year planning period. So we create targets only for the urban area. They said cover about a 20-year period at least. And we work collaboratively to create the targets with all the cities in King County. So King County does not create targets for jurisdictions. We facilitate the process and invite all jurisdictions into the big tents to do the fun work of assigning growth targets to each jurisdiction. We're really focused on getting complete participation. So it's been great to be working with Laura on this and we've had really good participation across the county and which is essential in creating growth targets that we all want to plan for in our next comprehensive plan update. So the process starts as a kind of top-down process. And then we insert some local information to make it more of a bottom-up to actually allocate and determine what those final growth targets will be. So I say it's top-down because we really start at a regional level with the Vision 2050 Regional Growth Strategy and a regional forecast in line with the Office of Financial Management Population Projections. So with that regional forecast, we apply the growth shares from the PSRC Vision 2050 Regional Growth Strategy to break that regional forecast down to King County. King County has about 50% of the region's growth in terms of population and about 59% of the region's growth in jobs. So once we have those countywide control totals for population and jobs, we apply the regional geography shares from the growth strategy to the countywide numbers so that we have regional geography level controls in terms of population and jobs. Duval is in the Cities and Towns Regional Geography with 18 other cities in King County. So it's our biggest group and represents a diverse body of cities that are in King County, everything from Skycomish to Semamish. So once we have those regional geography totals, we start the more complicated next steps of creating some preliminary growth target ranges for jurisdictions. And the purpose of that is really to seed the conversation amongst all of the cities within the regional geography. So we take a database approach and I'll spend more time talking about this in the next slide to break that regional geography allocation down to each city based on a variety of different database factors. Once we have that in place, then we get all the cities together, grouping them by regional geography to deliberate and determine ultimately what our draft set of growth targets is going to be. So we are on track to do that. We are really in that last phase, which is really the orange box here, getting towards creating draft targets. But I'm going to spend a little bit more time in talking about the preliminary target ranges that we have created to date. So as I said, these are essentially different scenarios that we create to get the conversation going about what the right growth targets are for any city in this regional geography. So that first step is what I described on the last slide about creating the control totals for the county and the regional geographies. And once we have those in place, then we can start thinking about how to break them up to local jurisdictions. So to do that, we identify a variety of different data factors or indicators that relate to growth targets and development. These are things like the amount of capacity that's coming from the buildable lands report or the existing growth targets or the current number of housing units and jobs in each city. We determine with a countywide group of staff what the right data factors are for our, this round of targeting. And then we go out and collect those data factors from the generally widely available data sources. So really coming from the census and the Office of Financial Management and Employee Security Department and yourselves. So we, we work with the cities to calculate the relative amount of capacity left over and that gets So we, we work with the cities to calculate the relative amount of capacity left over and that gets fed into this process as well. So once we have collected each one of those data factors, each city has a value, we turn them into percentages. So just kind of summing up all of the individual values for a city and then taking each individual jurisdiction as a percentage of the whole. This gives us the right information that we can apply to that regional geography total and create individual data factor scenarios. So these are really our preliminary targets for each city. So we repeat that process for every single data factor, creating a, a range of preliminary or potential target values for each jurisdiction. So a little bit to know about those ranges. They are, as I tried to describe on that last slide, they're coming from data that is commonly available and rooted in topics that are related to growth, recent growth, or development in the jurisdiction. So we repeat this for every single data factor and create a range for each city. And you'll see, or you maybe have already seen that the ranges are quite large, pretty broad for most cities. And, and that's okay, because we, we don't want to be just giving different indications. To use an analogy, we're, we're using each factor as a different kind of way to cut the overall cake and portion a slice of that cake to each city. But the, really the way to understand each column in the next table or each column of the preliminary range is that what would a set of targets look like if the projected growth to the regional geography was apportioned proportionally based on this data factor? Then, once we have this kind of hard database set of data factors, then we get the cities together and they are invited to include local information to add a little bit of context or realism to really ground those numbers in reality. So Laura has told me that, that the city of Duval has a number of development projects in the pipeline. And this is something that we want to be conscientious of as we are developing our growth targets, because we want to make sure that we're going to set a target out to 2044 that gives Duval some room to, to grow to its aspiration and its, its planned densities and amounts of population and jobs, but considers that kind of local context of where you're at today, what that trajectory is like, if you expect it to continue or not. So we're really in this process where we're including, inviting that information into the fold. And the last thing to know about the range of values is that even though it's quite wide, I think for Duval, it's ranging from like 500 to 1,200 housing units, for example, that, that this is not a binding range. So ultimately, the eventual growth target doesn't have to fall within that range. But we want to be sure that we're sticking to that control total at the Cities and Towns Regional Geography level. So, so if, for example, the city wanted a target that was slightly outside of the range or, you know, not more substantially outside of that range, that would be okay. And another city within the regional geography would likely pick up the slack. Or, sorry, I said the opposite thing. Likely, there would be a partner that would be kind of a sending or a donor for the extra growth that the city could take. So we're working on that process now to make sure we can meet each city's need accordingly. So the next couple of slides I have are very tabular. They're full of numbers. And I know that can be disorienting, so feel free to slow me down or I can just walk through this and do the best I can. So this is a table of the preliminary target ranges for every jurisdiction within the Cities and Towns Regional Geography. And I've highlighted Duval's row in here. So the way to understand this is that the first six columns all represent preliminary target values for the city of Duval. The last five are all preliminary target values for jobs for the city of Duval. And each column represents a scenario that we created by allocating the regional geography control total to cities based on the, the data label that you're seeing right here. So this first column allocates just under 600 housing units of that overall regional geography total to Duval based on the current number of housing units that the city has. So this one is about current, the current number of jobs. It does the same thing. The third column distributes the, the regional geography control total to cities based on their existing housing unit. So that's what we've already adopted, or excuse me, housing target. This one is, is looking at land area. And this one is looking at recent growth from 2006 to 2019. And finally, the last column is what a distribution to each city would look like based on their relative amount of housing capacity in the city to date. So all in all, that creates a pretty wide band for the city of Duval. I mean, it stretches from under 500 units to over 1,000. So our process now is whittling down these rows to what, which factors appear to be most relevant to the, the, the group of cities that we have, we've gotten together. So we're kind of picking out the ranges that we think are most valuable, by the most valuable information, collapsing them to a single point where that'll be kind of like our baseline for negotiation. So again, the ultimate target should be informed by your local circumstances. It might not actually fall between these numbers, but that's okay. We, we want to include, or we want to get to a place that y'all want to plan for into the future. And my last slide is more focused on some data that's related to growth targets. So taking a look at recent growth relative to the recent, the currently adopted target, how much of that target is complete, and then just some data points from, from really the last slide. So to put this in context, I have a little dashboard that Laura thought might be helpful to demonstrate. I might need to stop sharing, so you can all see it too. Let me see. So, select Duval here. Okay, so what's, what you're seeing in this graph, this is really measuring Duval's performance in achieving its growth target. So on the top half of this slide, the, it's talking about housing and the bottom is about jobs. So over in the chart, you can see this is Duval's current adopted target in the CPPs. It's about 1,300 units. And to date, Duval has grown by about 600 housing units. And that's 44% of its overall housing target. That's right in, on track with where we're supposed to be. So you're doing a great job. 41% of our entire target period has elapsed from 2006 to 2018. And you've achieved 44% of your target. So that's right on the money. For jobs, the really similar situation. Again, this is the jobs target. And this is how much job growth has occurred in Duval to date. It's about 31% of the target. So we comparing that to the amount of time that's passed in the target period, which is 41%. It's still pretty right on the money and meets our definition for achieving growth targets. So I can switch back to our presentation, or we could switch before, between those two things if that's helpful. But really, this is presenting the same kind of information of how much housing growth has been in Duval recently, what the current target is that you've achieved 44% of it. And then these data are really just here to kind of contextualize what, what that means maybe in terms of your current capacity or future target. So that's, that's the material that I have today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or I'm not sure if Laura wants to add anything.
So thank you, Ms. Maskin. Excellent presentation. We'll start off with council. Are there any council members that have questions or feedback? First, Mayor Pretend Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. Rebecca, thank you for that. That was very helpful. It's just so nice to have you come out and provide the information. I especially like the, the piece you had in there about providing information from each city that adds realism. That Duval does have some unique features, but we recognize it's such a huge lift to find places for people to live that are moving here that we all have to be a part of it. So we, we understand that. But I did want to take a moment, both for you as well as our, our citizens, to talk about a few of those unique things that adds realism. One of our biggest concerns out here anytime we do surveys is, is simply about traffic and, and transportation issues. That's a regional issue. It's not unique to Duval. But just because where we live, we have very little bus service. And so folks have to drive, and those are the long commutes, or at least longer than, than many folks have. We have our own wastewater treatment plant, which is unique for many cities. And that particular item, as we add folks, it's millions of dollars as we found out looking at our budget to accommodate. So it's more than just being able to build a home. It certainly be able to add infrastructure. Most of us have learned over the years that growth doesn't pay for growth. So it's, it's just a challenge for smaller cities. I, I was surprised, I think personally, that, I, I think we used to be called rural and now we're part of the cities and towns. The only point I'd make there is that most cities, when you look at Redmond, Kirkland, Samamish, Izaco, they're contiguous. You pretty much drive from one town to another and, you know, you don't necessarily see the borders. Here you drive through a valley that, you know, it's just really obvious you're driving out in a rural area. I, I'm not suggesting you change it. I saw the list and many other cities similar to Duval are on there as well. But it seems like certainly a consideration about rural, because there are special impacts with that. Economic development, you know, many cities have huge engines for their, their economy. We have a lot of limitations. We certainly live on an island out here. My point there is very few folks are going to drive out to Duval to the hardware store. Although I know some from Izaco that drive out to our bakery because they just find it so delicious. But, but it really is a, a factor we have to consider as a growing city, that economic engine is limited. Certainly, our business owners appreciate our growth because it simply allows more folks to purchase from them. But we don't have that kind of economic engine you see in, in other towns. This one's unique flooding. You know, we literally, I mentioned being an island. Literally, we become an island sometimes. Those factors make a difference with emergency services that aren't always available to come out here. And as we add more folks, you know, there are considerations we have about how to be able to take care of them when things flood and people can't get to work and, and get around. Maintaining our rural character, one reason a lot of folks move out here, one reason we try to preserve our valleys and take care of our salmon is, is because some of the other areas, you know, I mean, if you look at the Kent Valley and the Green River, they don't have a lot of options to try to return it to what it was. Out here, we're really trying to protect our river and stream systems. Cherry Valley happens to be one of the most endangered streams in the area. Again, it doesn't preclude growth. It just means we have to be really careful to protect those things that are, are designated as endangered. So it's the impacts on the environment, I think is what I'm, I'm just trying to point out. Lastly, some of the big cities have zoning that allows for apartments and condos and high-rise buildings. And you can pack in a couple thousand people in a, you know, 50-story high-rise. Well, that's not going to happen out here. So we're eating up a lot of land to put in those homes. We do have R12 and R20, and we have really worked hard to include, include low-income housing where it's feasible. But those are all challenges, I think, that are really tougher to deal with as a small town. So again, I go back to say, we want to be part of this solution and really help out. I'm so thankful that Director Laura Thomas is serving on there. She probably knows all of the information I shared as well as anyone. And I can't think of a better person to help represent us and participate in that. Well, thank you again for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Hoag.
So I appreciate what you said, Mayor Pretend Remington. I, I guess what I would like to add when it comes to traffic is it feels like we're almost at a breaking point, that it would be really super hard to add more people to our community if we don't improve the roads, which means Woodinville-Duval and/or maybe there's some solutions on 124th. But especially when it floods, but that's only, you know, a few days a year. But when it does flood, Woodinville-Duval, it can take hours to get back into the city. So, but really, just the daily commuting is really difficult. So there, I feel like something has to happen on Woodinville-Duval or where it connects to 203. We just don't have very many options in and out of the city. So that's just my thoughts on, on growth. But I appreciate what you said, Mr. Remington.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland, McHenry, and Lego. And then I know that we have staff that want to provide some context as well.
Thank you. That was a really great presentation. I appreciate you coming out here. And I actually caught another presentation that, I can't remember who it was, but in Samamish. And I was very excited to see that you have been, you know, speaking to the different communities. And I, I think they share similar challenges in that they're not quite as far out of an island as we are, but they rely on county roads to connect. And we're really in that situation. And I, I think the vision of GMA was that there would be concurrency, that as you build houses, you would build the infrastructure required. And so for Duval, we can, you know, raise money to only fix the roads in our little tiny, what, mile stretch. And all these people that we are building houses for cross over our boundary into unincorporated county, King County, and spend 10 miles or more on one-lane roads that are absolutely maxed at beyond capacity. You know, Redmond Ridge, an entire city got built in between us and, you know, real civilization, you know, the, the urban core. And it's, it's just very difficult for me to understand how this would be in the spirit of GMA to continue to add more and more and more people in an area that can't connect. And we have no way to improve the roads. Our city, I mean, we can advocate. I've, I'm on Eastside Transportation Partnership. You know, I, I've been trying to get involved and everything we hear is, you know, King County doesn't have any money. And, you know, all these higher priority projects on 520 and the bridges and this, that all gets, you know, floats to the top and gets prioritized. Anyway, I'm sure you've heard this a million times, but when I look at the growth targets, and I'm not sure exactly what the start date would be, you know, the 500 to 1,200, is that starting as of the last count you had of how many homes we have? Because honestly, we have enough in our pipeline to meet those targets already. And it feels like there's so much demand that the builders are just going to build as fast as they can. And it's just, I, I don't know how to express it anymore. But I, you know, ran for council just a few years ago, went door to door. And people are really concerned. This impacts their day-to-day life. You know, you have families that want to come home and volunteer to be a coach on Little League, but they're stuck in traffic every day. You know, I mean, we're so far away from the working core. And right now, obviously, we're home because of coronavirus. A lot of people are. But, you know, it's just temporary. And yeah, I mean, just the comment Councilmember Hoag made, it's really a safety issue that you have all these people kind of trapped here. And I have a friend who, you know, had a medical emergency during one of the storms. And there's no way out. You'd have to bring a helicopter in even, or, you know, trying to cross the bridge when it's solid vehicles. Anyway, it's, it's a very big concern in our community, and we just constantly get that feedback. So I wanted to share a little bit of the frustration that I'm hearing from our community, community members. I share it as well. I don't really know what the answer is. But I, I don't think that this is what GMA intended to create. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you so much again for coming.
So Mayor, were you calling on me? You were still muted. I just want to make sure.
Yes. And then Councilmember Lingle. And then I know that staff wants to speak as well.
Well, thanks so much for all the information, your presentation. It was really great. I don't have much to add than what started, you've been said, so I'll just go ahead and echo some of that. But I think, you know, it is a huge challenge already being constrained by roads, state and county that are outside of our control. And you know, as other council members have pointed out in terms of a natural disasters, just regular safety with normal events such as flooding. You know, we can be really trapped here and so it's already an issue. And adding more to that is just obviously going to get worse. So we'd like to see this correlate with major infrastructure improvements. And I don't know what the status of that or, you know, how that will happen, what kind of coordination that takes. But I, I mean, that's really what our citizens are concerned with.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle.
Yeah, I'm going to comment this from a little different angle. And, and I was around when GMA was first set up. And I don't think it was the intent of GMA to bankrupt small cities. And I, as a citizen, I reviewed a financial analysis related to an annexation here in Duval. And I can tell you that many of their assumptions were, I'm trying to think of a way to say it, not realistic. And even in that analysis, within five years, Duval would go in the red. And that was, that was with an assumption that utility maintenance was going to be taken over by homeowners association, which of course HOAs can be disbanded. They cannot be adequately capitalized. I mean, there's a lot of issues. And we just got a presentation today at our COW about the additional expenses Duval was going to have to assume because our wastewater treatment facility, which was, you know, planned with the anticipation of this growth is not going to be sufficient. And we're going to have to build more of that system out sometime in 2023, 2023, 2024. And then along with that, we would then be at full capacity for our wastewater treatment facility. And because of the limitations on taxation, revenue in the state, the 1% limitation, our ability to raise more funds, just keeping up with what we already have in our pipeline is very questionable. And again, I don't, I don't think GMA anticipated this. But I think this is what's happening. And you know, I just think about things like Kohani. When Kohani was built, you know, wasn't annexed in, the deterioration of infrastructure was not fully understood, I think. And even now in Duval, I mean, our Public Works Department is really working hard to do what some might see as, you know, kind of a redevelopment activity. We're getting an older as a city. We're going to have to replace infrastructure, certainly repair it quite a bit. And yet dollars are very limited in the grant world for those kind of funds. So I mean, my concern of it is really from the financial side. You know, when you're building inside your city limits and you've already prepared for new infrastructure, you at least are getting some tax revenue based on previous investments. So your return on investment is quite different than if your, your growth responsibilities start going outside. And even inside with the numbers we have now, we're looking at some real financial challenges. And I'm not hearing anything about how we're going to offset those challenges financially. And I'm really worried about that, not just as a council member, but as a citizen. It's almost like the discussion isn't, isn't just about taking our share. It's how we, how do we financially do that as a small city? And that's never really been like totally part of, that really hasn't been part of GMA's discussion. It's always been, as you say, jobs and I, and jobs and housing. And assuming certain, there's always certain assumptions around, you know, how many people live per unit and all of that. But you know, this is a family-oriented community. And I think the last time I looked at census data, we have about like 3.6, 3.5 persons per household. So we are comparative to certainly not a Seattle. Or, you know, when you think about these major redevelopments within King County, whether that's, you know, redevelopment of Alderwood Mall or, you know, you know, North Gate, I mean, where there's going to be lots and lots of density, we're just not set up for that kind of return. And I, I just, I guess I'll just end there because I'm very, very concerned that small cities are at such a severe financial disadvantage. Even when we want to take, I mean, I, I build at higher densities than what is in Duval. So it's not just an anti-density dialogue. I'm, I'm really talking about what are our resources to sustain, you know, expanded growth. I mean, even within the city limits, we're really going to be struggling. Our general fund, when you look at the nexus of revenue to operating costs, it's not a good nexus. And I'm not sure what we do as a council to act responsibly. And we, we have to pass balanced budget. And we can't, we can't really afford to cut services. The mayor has been very clear in her proposals around that. And we're just struggling to figure out how do we meet all the, the things we need to do and still be inclined, you know, in compliance with things. So I, I really am, my, my direction on it is just very, very concerned about the financial ability of us to accept more growth.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, I know you had some input.
Yes, please. Thank you, Rebecca, for coming and talking to the council. And listening to council feels like I'm in a planning director's meeting in our caucus because everything that you have said has been shared with that group and of course more. You know, we talk a lot about local context and, and what each of us looks like. And so I'm very happy that you shared that because I've been sharing it, but it's more powerful when it comes from council. One thing I want to do and talk about at our next council meeting is Larissa and I. And so I've talked, Larissa is part of our technical team for this update. And so she's attending the directors' meetings with me. And we're going through, we've actually pretty much completed what I call a grounding exercise. Cause we spent the first like six weeks just trying to understand the information and the data. And, you know, the low and the high numbers. And what I can tell you, and I shared this with Rebecca at this, at our last meeting, that while you have, you know, this low and this high range of like, you know, 500 and change to 1,000 and change. When you take our pipeline, we're already within about 400 units of that high number. And that does not include ever annexing at this point during this next planning period, our annexation areas. So while I am hearing go low, not high, realistically, we're already almost at that high, at that higher capacity before we've even started a true discussion. And we shared that with, you know, with Rebecca at the last meeting. My guess is that many other small cities are in the same literally boat. So I think that is probably of a larger concern to us as directors in, in the valley and in the region, because if we're already starting kind of, I'll say in the rears, because we're already in this pipeline, my guess is other cities are as well. And so we really are going to hit that target much earlier than I think what's identified in the regional growth strategy. So I think that's something that's going to need continued discussion at, you know, at the county level. So stay tuned. We'll bring forward our local context. And so we've identified, you know, essentially all the building permits that we've issued in the pipeline. So one thing to note is I love that dashboard, but one thing I would say is that's 2018, up to 2018 building data. And we've issued over 150 permits since then. So just, I just, I don't want you to think that those, those numbers are good, they're grounded, but they're in a different space of time than where we're at actually today. And so I think we'll have to do some, it, it'll be interesting to see how we're going to share this message with, with our community. Cause I think it'll be hard to explain. They're already within that growth target and are looking at that higher end because what we already have in that pipeline. So, so stay tuned and I'm hopeful that the county can help us navigate that issue and see what it looks like across the board for our other cities. I can tell you, being in that, there are some cities are like, okay, you know, like I'll take some of your numbers. But there are also a lot of cities that are like, hey, hey, we're not, we're not sure. Our local contacts, we're pumping the brakes and, and Duval really is pumping the brakes. But we're only able to pump them so far because we're already there. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, I just want to add, I think, so Rebecca knows, I think everybody, all council members recognize that much of what we're talking about with our local concern is out of your control. I think that, you know, to, in, in part of our local context discussion, we recently did a traffic study last year that showed 75% of our traffic through Duval and onto King County roads is from Snohomish County. And so what we don't get to have in the context of this growth targets discussion, and we don't even get to consider on a city basis, is that growth in South Snohomish County and how it's going to impact Duval, especially if we have to take on even more growth. And so I think the message, you know, we know that it's up to our state legislators to change GMA. And so I think part of the message going back is that we are at our breaking point. Public health and safety is at risk because of our transportation situation. I did serve on the Bridges and Roads Task Force a few years back. And when we tried to share these very real concerns, they were put on the back burner and we're at a point of criticality at this point. So kind of that message back to the county, to departments other than yours, is that we also need the county to step up and start making real progress towards a local transportation funding plan for the county, as well as getting on board for state legislative changes to change how we're actually planning for the housing growth and job growth and the roads that people are actually taking to get to and from. You know, these are real concerns that we all have. And I think that in general, if we have the infrastructure to support what is coming forward, I think that people in general would be okay, but we don't. And not having the transportation side connected is huge. And it is, it's a very real issue that I, I've lived here almost 20 years and I've reversed commuted just Snohomish County. So I've seen firsthand the two to five mile backups going the other direction in the morning. And it's, we're, we're kind of hitting that breaking point. And then to Councilmember Lingle's point about the financial stability, we need, you know, definitely county support as well as legislative support to get more fiscal flexibility. So that, or direct funding for some of these things, so that we can afford to maintain our cities. Because we will be at that breaking point. We've gotten very lucky revenue-wise where we're not at the fiscal cliff where we predicted a few years ago we would be. But that fiscal cliff is coming. And so when we look at these numbers and look at the planning, I think the message back to the county to folks outside of your department is this is our local context. And we won't survive as, as a city if we don't get that, get some of those transportation changes, some transportation projects done and fiscal changes to help us be sustainable as a city. But you're, we know that you guys do not control that. You have a job to do. And, but asking for local context, this is, this is part of something that's really important to everyone here in the community. So, thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it. Does anybody else have anything, any final questions or feedback for King County? Councilmember Napland.
I just, I just wanted to comment on something that our director mentioned that we do have a lot in our pipeline. I also mentioned that. But some of those are, you know, more recently in the pipeline and they may or may not pan out. So I, I don't want to be in a situation where we assume every single one of those is going to happen and then give ourselves a little more buffer. I, 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 I don't know. I just, I'm very hesitant to take on too much of a growth target because, you know, when I first was interested in being on council, I kept being directed to growth targets saying, oh, we have to annex this. We have to do this because we have these growth targets and we're going to get in trouble if we don't meet those growth targets. I did not like that narrative and I don't want to be in that situation again where our community feels like we have lost control over our own destiny and that we are being forced to take on growth that we, you know, don't have the infrastructure to handle. So from what I've heard, you know, there's no penalty necessarily if you don't stay perfectly in your growth target. And maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. And so I would like to err on the lowest end. And, you know, it may or may not, some of these projects that are in our pipeline may or may not pan out. We don't know what the economy will do. We had a huge pipeline, you know, many years ago. And then the economy tanked and the housing market fell apart and then all these projects fell. So I don't know how other council members feel about that, but I feel very strongly that our community would appreciate low growth targets. So we don't feel obligated to provide more growth than our community feels comfortable with.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend Remington.
Thank you. Rebecca, I wanted to just say again, you're the right person to come out. You're a great listener. You obviously are very skilled and knowledgeable and, and providing the presentation. And as the mayor said, some of the items we have are outside of King County. But I will share, there's two other items that I've watched. Sometimes legislation gets brought forward, but doesn't pass. But two of those that we have watched, one with the state and one of those with King County, absolutely scare me. One of those was a requirement that municipalities would be required if they have a urban growth area to annex it. And it literally take away our power locally to make that decision. They just, you know, and that was, you know, it didn't get through the legislature, but it was hanging out there. The one that was tied to that, that almost made things worse, that if you did have areas that you annexed, you'd be required for it to be R6. Most of ours are R4. And so not only would be, we be required to grow, but we would be required to stuff more homes in than we're prepared to do. And I think if those were to pass, I think our citizens wouldn't be talking to us. I think they would be screaming at the county and the state. Those are our things, as Councilmember Lingle pointed out, almost tip us over. You know, we have to be able to manage those over a period of time. And the local control has to be maintained to make sure that, you know, those of us that are required to help maintain this infrastructure can do so. But thank you again, Rebecca.
Thank you. All right.
Words and your, your input on this process. Very helpful to hear.
Well, thank you again for coming out. We really appreciate it and look forward to providing more local context and input as the conversation continues. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to our first item of new business. We do not have any public hearings this evening. It's Agenda Bill 20-123A Duval Municipal Code Chapter 10 update for discussion only. And we have Mr. Brian Kaler from Community Development presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and attendees. Tis the season for building code update. Well, technically this should have been done back in July, but due to COVID, the state has postponed it not once, but twice. And it looks like July, or not July, but February 1st is the final date for the state to adopt the family of codes, the International Code Council of Codes and the amendments for the state. So I just kind of wanted to go over the memo that I, I sent or that is attached in that every three years, the Code Council comes together with the mother codes that the state adopts and then amends. And then from the state amendments that we are required to adopt, the city. And then from the state amendments that we are required to adopt um, the city. Or municipalities um, amend. So in that memo, I ca- I went over um, the kind of the process or the origin of adoption or actually how ICC came about. Back uh, when it first originated back in ninety-four. And also why it was created, um, and then I listed um, what we adopt as the state and then where we also can find it. Due to COVID, um, staff has been uh, doing training virtually through seminars. We are trying to prepare for the two thousand eighteen codes. As uh, there are some noteworthy uh, changes. That we are doing some internal training on um, that our inspectors will need to find in the field as long as, as long, uh, also along with the, our plan review. And then uh, below I just recapped um, kind of the transition from the two thousand fifteen codes to what we are adopting is the two thousand eighteen. The state also was looking at adopting the two thousand twenty-one, um, but at this time, uh, we are going to adopt the two thousand eighteen codes. The second attachment um, is the Agenda Bill. This is just the recommendation that we adopt um, the two thousand eighteen codes. With the state amendments, uh, this, this uh, excludes uh, chapter one, which is our administration code. Which is our title ten um, that we will, that we are amending right now. Um, and updating, um, and then we will uh, provide that to you at the next council meeting. The attachments right now are just kind of giving you the. The current amendments that we have of the two thousand fifteen uh, for our title ten, we're just going to go through title ten. Uh, construction documents and clean it up. Um, and also amend a quite a few actually appendix that the state did not do this year. And I'll be able to present that to you um, next council. Uh, some of the expenditures, some of the budgets, uh, budget expenditures that will happen or that will be needed um, with this adoption. Uh, is the, the amount to four thousand, this, this amount is for two copies of all. Uh, two thousand eighteen code books for the international code books. That is the dollar amount, the state amendments uh, do not cost anything, so we will be able to print and insert those into the. Mother codes, um, and then we'll also update our uh, amendment codes uh, to two thousand eighteen. Uh, third attachment. I just wrote a report, I just really touched on all of the major changes that you will, that we will be seeing uh, that affects our city here. Some of the noteworthy parts, um, as I've gone through it. Would be solar panels. In the two thousand fifteen code, uh, this. Really only took up maybe a paragraph at that time, um, and then in the two thousand eighteen code. They have definitely refined it and and added to it and it takes almost up almost about two pages worth now. So that is something to note, um, and that's just kind of an overview of some of the new codes that were adopted in two thousand fifteen, now they have kind of added to and. And uh, you know, lifehouse safety issues have been addressed. One of the appendix that the state has adopted, um, that we have seen come down our pipeline, um, our tiny homes. This uh, tiny home provision, really the codes have been kind of behind in that sense, uh, the tiny homes are ahead of all of that, now we actually have some language that. We actually can. Review and and add to and amend, um, and along with uh, some of the planning policies so we can kind of align as one group. So that is something that we are looking well to work with um, across multiple departments. To figure out what kind of our wording and and usage of uh, the code will will be. Um, and then the third, third one at the very bottom. Of the report. Is our energy code update. This is state requirement and state led um, that by twenty thirty. All buildings will need to be seventy percent more efficient, um, and this starts back in two thousand six from, so from two thousand six to two twenty-three. That is each year nine percent increase of more efficiency with the building envelope. Um, and so in the two thousand eighteen code. We are looking at going, the requirements for the two thousand fifteen were three point five credits for a medium dwelling and that is the most common. For a single family, one, so one and two family dwelling with a townhome. Three point five credits, so in this new code cycle starting a great first. They will be required to do, have six credits, so what they're, what the architect or the designer. Um, will actually have to provide um, for review, uh, compliance um, with. Six credits instead of three point five, and so that is either somehow in the water heating. Building envelope, so insulation, uh, how tight, uh, what we're trying to do is, what they, what the state is trying to do is make sure the buildings are. Tighter and tighter every year, and so um, it's, it's going to be. Very challenging and new for the architects and and the uh, designers. So I, I, I imagine. The first few months of this middles, um, it'll definitely be a lot of uh, learning um, from all, all uh. All departments on, on uh. How, how do we actually meet those six credit requirements? And so that, that honestly is probably the biggest code. Update um, requirement um, that we're going to actually have to implement, um, and so that is something that we, that staff has been uh. Definitely gearing up for and, and, and studying and taking uh, multiple courses for. And so that's kind of where we're starting off, uh, and then the next council meeting, um, I'm going to bring forth the ordinance of proposed adoptions. Uh, or amendments to the state and the International Code Council uh, codes. So, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kaler, um, Councilmember Lengel?
Uh, yeah, just a, a question and then uh, just a comment is that, I mean, this is a good example of after a second presentation. I mean, I, I, this is the kind of thing I think that can go on, I can set agenda just to know, we're all just a general comment, but. Um, in talking with other developers, what I've heard is that with the new energy code. They're having a really hard time finding materials that will help them meet the credit requirements. And um, because the manufacturing systems. Provide, you know, industry whatever, um, is just not geared up yet for this, and I wondered if you have heard that from your builders as well. That, that's the last conversation I've heard with from, you know, several different places, so. Curious about that one.
There is, yes, I've heard that from a few of the developer, developers and um, some of the contractors as well. Wazoo, so Washington State, um, they actually have provided a very good. Overview of how they actually can meet the requirements and they have provided that and we can actually attach that to. Any of the applicants, if they do have any issues that, hey, this is how you can possibly meet those requirements. Based off of all the criteria that you need to hit. Um, and so that is out there, we do have that, um, we will be able to provide that to some of the applicants.
Thank you, any other council members with questions or feedback? Mayor Pretem Remington?
Hey, Brian, I, I just want to congratulate you again on your certifications and. I can't tell you how uh, pleased I am to, to watch what you bring to us uh, uh, here at City of Duval. I know we have a growing workload, uh, I often tell folks when you're doing building inspection, you get one chance to get it right, once they get the certificate of occupancy. You don't get to knock on the door and go back and say, hey, we decided to change everything, so it's just critical what you're doing, I don't think everyone. Recognizes between uh, you know, reviewing construction documents, issuing permits, doing inspections, making sure that you uh. Enforce compliance on these things and it really affects safety here in town, uh, both for residential as, as well as commercial. So I wanted to just encourage you, uh, tell you how much we appreciate your being here. And uh, I really appreciate the updates on uh, on the new uh, international codes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Remington.
Thank you, Mayor Pretem. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much, Brian, um, excellent presentation and as always and great work, so thank you. Uh, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty dash one twenty-four B, third amendment for the Snoqualmie IT interlocal agreement for discussion. And I'll let Kevin lead this, but in general, um, the only changes I think that we had was the. Conditions of just getting some regular reporting in place. And I don't believe there's been any other changes to the interlocal, uh, except when the city of Snoqualmie is expected to vote on it. So with that, I will let Mr. Smith take it away.
Good evening, councilmembers, uh, mayor and staff. As the mayor just introduced, um, this is our second touch on this bill. And uh, just here to answer any questions, we've made the updates that were requested last time we presented this. And City of Snoqualmie is ready to uh, do its vote on the first council meeting of the year, so. I really don't have anything new to present, um, so I hope, happy to answer questions if you have any.
Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing done, then I'll expect it uh, for approval on our first meeting in January. But then the question is, it is a third touch and the question then is, does council want this on the consent agenda or regular agenda? Councilmember Lengel?
I'm fine with it being on the consent agenda.
Okay, any objections? Seeing none, well, we're almost there, so thank you, Kevin, for being here tonight. And we'll move on to the next agenda item and definitely looking forward to the next few years working with you. Alright, so Agenda Bill AB twenty dash one twenty-five A, TIB grant acceptus, acceptance, Roni Road overlay for discussion and our decision, and this is a first touch. Mr. Lenishewski?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, Citizens, uh, Steve Lenishewski, help works. And Mayor, we did discuss this um, as being non-first touch as it was grant application process run through the city.
Yes, you're correct.
Formal acceptance thereof, and honestly, it would have been proposed under consent with a busy night, but. Uh, the grant we asked for was four hundred sixty thousand for two projects, we received two hundred and nineteen thousand nine thirty-three for one of the projects. So we are still graciously happy to accept that. And do the one project at this time, and I did mention in the committee of the whole meeting that we possibly can design both projects. Being prepared, um, but we have time to decide on that, so this is just accepting the grant and. Saying that we will fulfill our obligation to overlay Roni Road from Big Rock to that. Questions or comments?
Thank you for catching my mistake there, Steve.
I live for, I live for work.
Any questions or comments, and if there are none, um, is council ready to accept this this evening? And if so, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor Mike Remington, uh, I move that we suspend our three touch rule on this item in preparation for accepting the grant award.
Second, Councilmember Napland?
Right, uh, we have a first and a second, Mayor Pretem Remington and Councilmember Napland to suspend the rules, any objections? So seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and I'd be happy to entertain a motion on the underlying Agenda Bill.
Mike Remington, Mayor, I um, move that council approve Agenda Bill twenty. Dash one twenty-five A, TIB grant acceptance, uh, running road overlay.
Second, Councilmember Napland?
Right, any further discussion? We have a motion by Mayor Pretem Remington, a second by Councilmember Napland to accept the grant, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, so thank you and congratulations, uh, Steve, this is just another. Example of uh, really great work of bringing our taxpayer dollars back to Duval, so thank you for that. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty dash one twenty-six A, uh, approve employee contract amendment for discussion and our decision. I believe we have, um, this is. To introduce this, this is to amend our uh, finance director's contract after. Exemplary performance in our first year of um, employment at the city. And we will need to suspend the, the three touch rule to make sure it's in effect for the beginning of the year. And with that, um, I think council is already aware of what's going on, and so if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them now. Otherwise, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and then approve the contract.
Michelle Hoag, I'd like to suspend the rules.
Second. So we have a first by Councilmember Hoag, second by Councilmember Beck Henry to suspend the rules, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And now I'm ready for a motion on the underlying Agenda Bill.
Michelle Hoag. Uh-oh, I don't have the Agenda Bill number in front of me. Okay, I would like.
AB twenty dash one twenty-six.
AB twenty dash one twenty-six A. Move that we approve that Agenda Bill.
Second, McHenry? Alright, do we have any discussion? Councilmember Napland?
I just want to say how uh, I've enjoyed working with Director Mason and we're just thrilled that she chose Duval and. We're happy to provide this amendment, so I just wanted to express my personal happiness that you chose Duval, honestly, we're just thrilled.
Anyone else want to say anything, you're welcome to, but not obligated, Miss Councilmember Hoag?
Well, I just, I, I, I have a hard time expressing how much I appreciate you, Director Mason, but. Working with you on the Finance Committee has been amazing, we, I feel like we really, um. The best ideas and you magically make them appear on the budget and it's like you're just. You're, you're amazing and I appreciate you're a good listener, you're very patient with us and I appreciate.
Great, uh, if there's no one else, I just want to um, say on the record. How thankful we are to have Ms. Mason um, at the city from the administration level and. She really is part of the glue that holds everything together at the city and. From a perspective of being here for eleven years now. I can say that she would be on a shadow of a doubt that she's the best finance director we've had and we've had some good finance directors. And she's definitely proved herself to be much more than a first time director and. She is an absolute pleasure to work with and. Um, I think that we are very fortunate and our community is very fortunate to have her here, so thank you. And with that, oh, I, did, did you want to say something, Dana?
Right back at you.
So with that, um, now that we've embarrassed Dana a little bit, all those in favor of the contract amendment, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, thank you, and again, congratulations on your first year and we look forward to many more. So moving on to unfinished business. Agenda Bill twenty dash one eleven B, approve and authorize the mayor to enter into memorandum of agreement between a regional coalition for housing. By City of Bellevue, its administering agency and the City of Duval for discussion and or decision, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of our community, I'm going to share my screen really quick. So, we've been working on this agreement now for probably about six, six weeks. Arch did approve the memorandum of agreement at their board meeting on December tenth. Daniel, Kenny, our city attorney and myself reviewed the memorandum of agreement on several occasions and helped them adjust some of the items. That came forward either from, from us as administration, from the attorney and even from council. And so we did want to put, I guess, some just bookmarks in there so that we made sure that we all understood what the agreement was, how much it was going to cost. And so we did put in a bookend for the total amount of essentially their work to do with us over the next five years. And so we estimated it at about fifteen thousand, it'll be probably closer to just over, you know, just right around thirteen thousand, but we thought if there were. You know, if there were any kind of bumps in the road on anything, it gave them a little bit of bandwidth and capacity. And we also were concerned about their after-sales compliance monitoring a little bit, we wanted to make sure, well, okay, it's seventy-five dollars an hour. But how many hours is that really going to be? And so we asked for kind of a maximum number of hours, so we agreed upon the two hours, so that'd be about a hundred and fifty per, you know, per unit. But it does. But it does have a cost escalator every year. And they can come back and ask us for permission to go over that two hours. So we put that in the agreement. The other item that was important to us and I heard from council members, plus Daniel and I both shared the same, the same comment, was when they go through the resale process, there's an administrative fee that Arch requires essentially now as part of their program update. They didn't used to collect a 1% fee, but now they have an administrative policy that has them collecting the 1% fee. So what we want to do was say, okay, we're going to, we're going to cap that at a maximum of 1%. So for example, if their administrative policy changed to say one and a quarter or 2%, that we wouldn't, that we would not be part of that, that we would essentially be capping ourselves at the 1%. So those are the items that we worked through since the last council, the last council meeting. And so we feel like we're in pretty good shape and we're recommending that council authorize the mayor to approve the MOA.
This is a second touch, so it would require suspension of the rules, but it looks like we have some discussion. Councilmember Hoag.
Well, I guess I was hoping to get a little more information on this 1%. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious. Is that some, is that's a city expense? So it's not something that can be passed on to a seller? I know it's probably more difficult for it to be passed on to a buyer, but it is a city expense?
No, it's not, it's not a city expense, Councilmember Hoag.
So who takes on that 1% then?
That is, that is on, that is done at the sales. It's not the city. It is, I believe, the seller. I don't have the agreement in front of me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or feedback? So if council wanted to act on this tonight, you can with a suspension of your rules. Otherwise, we can put it to the first meeting in January. And that would be also council choice if it's on the regular agenda or under consent.
Mayor Mike Remington, it sounds like they have approved this and there aren't any anticipated changes. I would move that we suspend our three touch rule and approve it this evening.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Michelle Hoag.
Right, so we have a first by Mayor Pretem Remington, second by Councilmember Hoag to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, happy to entertain a motion on the underlying Agenda Bill.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that City Council approve Agenda Bill 20-111B, Approve and Authorize the Mayor to Enter into a Memorandum of Understanding between a Regional Coalition of Housing by City of Bellevue, Its Administering Agency and the City of Duval.
Second, Brad Nicky.
So I have a motion by Mayor Pretem Remington and a second by Councilmember Brad Nicky to approve the agreement. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-94C. So this is the third touch. Approve and authorize the mayor to execute Toll Brothers Affordable Housing Covenant. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm going to reshare my screen. I should have probably just left it up there, but I didn't. So now I will put it back up. So good, good, good evening, everybody. The covenant has been reviewed on a couple of occasions now. This is the third touch of the covenant. It has been reviewed by Arch, the city, and Toll Brothers and by council. And what we did is we went back through and looked at it again because we did have some of the comments. So that 1% Councilmember Hoag is actually in the covenant. But I wanted to make sure that identified it as part of the MO, of the MOA, since they were going to be the body that was going to help us manage our housing, our affordable housing program. We did make some additional edits to the, to this document. And one of them was the maximum resale fee at the 1%. And so that, we also set that the city or the designee shall set a maximum lease rental value as well if that unit is rented because something happens that isn't anticipated with the, the owner of the, of the unit. We did discuss at a council meeting, and I actually had a conversation with the council member on this as well. And I talked with Arch about one of the terms in 1.2, which was the definition of illness. And I agreed with Councilmember Lengel. I, I'm always about defining what does, you know, what does that mean? And she, you know, and what they shared with us, and I kind of, I took it with a grain of salt, is, you know, we don't see this issue very often. And we're the ones that'll define if that illness makes, you know, hits the muster. And so I'm like, are we going to get drug into that? Because that was one of my concerns along with Councilmember Lengel's concerns as well. So I think we'll have to watch that, I think, moving forward. They, they really didn't recommend that we changed it, but I did push really hard. And so I wanted to make sure that, you know, I talked a little bit about that. And then we also discussed the lease time max because it's at, it's set at 12 months. And so one of the options that we had thought about is do we say, okay, 12 months and up to a maximum? And I did walk that through with Arch. They didn't really have a preference one way or another. So that's why you saw in my strike and delete version that I still had it. You saw that it was still a question that, you know, that we had been discussing. I did want to say that I did have an Agenda Bill correction. What I'm asking council to do is approve the covenant to form. It doesn't require the mayor's authorization or signature. And so if there are any additional questions or comments, now would, now would be a great time.
Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, two points. The, the first one has to do with the lease provision, and I'm not proposing changing anything. But the leasing issue was the issue that the state auditor and the public, I had a big problem with it. And I think the current iteration of their covenant is an attempt to, you know, to manage that situation in a better way. But I do think it's something we're going to have to always be very diligent about because the, this is just an area where owners of property can take advantage of a public program, to be candid. The, the second thing, and I don't know if this got changed, but I, and I have to apologize because I mentioned this to our director late in the game, is the way the covenant is prepared is that on a resale, you have, and there's, if there's a disagreement, you have an MAI appraisal. MAI appraisals are not typically used for residential. And it would, the way it was drafted is the city is required to use an MAI. And that's expensive. I just think we have to be aware of that. And it, it's just not typical in, in a single family residential situation. So I don't know if that, I mean, I, I remember that late in the game. So if it's not in there, it's not in there. But what I was hoping for on the covenant was some flexibility that we could use an MAI or, you know, we could agree on another method. Because I, I believe the way it was drafted is that to resolve a difference, the seller might have to do that too. Laura, I don't have it in front of me. Am I remembering that right? I do remember that the MAI was what was required on the city. And I think what happened there is I think as Arch is trying to refine their program, they're working with the city attorney there, which is much more, much more oriented to things like tax credit projects where you absolutely use an MAI. So I don't know if that got changed, but I just wanted to call attention to that because if you, you have a disagreement over value and we have to use an MAI appraisal, it's going to be a chunk of change for the city.
One thing I, we, it didn't get changed. I, I did talk to Arch about it. And I, I did say this seems like an urban approach for mixed-use development, you know, something that, and is this really for single family? And she was going to go, you know, go back and talk to her group, but I have not heard back. The one thing that I did do is that I took this covenant only for the first project, which is for the ridge at Big Rock. So that it, it would allow us some time to make some changes to the next covenant for the, I'll just call it the Walden phase. Because I think we might, we might have some learning lessons in the early couple, you know, in this particular project. So I wanted to leave it open and let us have a little bit of time. Because it'll be a little while before the units, now I'll just say next door at Walden, come online. So this is literally just for the ridge at Big Rock.
Yeah. And if I could add, I think that that's really smart because I do think that Arch is trying to refine their program and I do appreciate that. And, and so what you're suggesting there, what you're planning to do there makes total sense. Because I really do think they're trying to rework their program to make it better. And that's awesome. So a lot of criticism. It's just, you know, I think that's the, the place where they are in their, in their, their homeownership efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Or actually, I think Ms. Thomas has one more slide. Or were you done? Oh, okay. I was looking at the PowerPoint there. Any other questions or feedback? Okay. And it's already late and I, we've gone through so much already tonight. I do not recall if we have a motion on this yet. I don't think we do.
Mayor Mike Remington, I would move that council approve Agenda Bill 20-94C, approving to form the Toll Brothers Affordable Housing Covenant.
Do we have a second?
Second, McHenry.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem Remington moved. Councilmember McHenry seconded approval of the perch memorandum. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, I'm moving on to Agenda Bill 20-35B, Westcott Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request for Discussion. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening again, Mayor, Councilmembers of our community. We're getting a lot done tonight. I really do appreciate this. Let me bring up my PowerPoint again. And that is for the last slide. So it's been a while since we've had a conversation. We actually started this conversation almost the beginning of the pandemic. And so as part of our mixed-use developments, we allow our developers, applicants, owners a little bit of time if they need it to come in with a, a commercial development application. And that's defined in our mixed-use code. We also acknowledged this particular code in the development agreement. And it gave council some authority and ability to provide a flexibility, but also to work with the, the owner, which at this point is Westcott. And so we're talking about the commercial parcel C1. That's currently where DFA has, it's barn, I'll just say disassembled under the, under the white tent. And we gave DFA, if you remember earlier in the year, a, a two-year extension of that tent so that they could get their project, you know, kind of on the ground and kicked off. The site was still under development. It had, you know, just finished final plating. They were still doing a lot of, a lot of work on that site. And so Westcott did come in, in January with their, with their request and then provided essentially a market report. But because of COVID, they weren't able to get a lot of detailed information in that report. And so we just put it on hold for a little while. And Melanie and I, I should say Melanie Davies and I from Westcott kept in contact. And in September, she had an updated report, but she did report back to us that it was still difficult to get, you know, a, a good market, market rate report. And so, you know, we decided to just continue to bring it forward. I didn't really want it to go for another, honestly, a year. Because we were really getting to a point where we needed to really have a discussion and get through this. So what we had talked about earlier in the year was doing an extension, but having Westcott come back at some point along that way to give us some additional information, just check base with the city. And so what I drafted and worked with our city attorney on was to allow a two-year extension that basically mimics what we've allowed DFA for them to keep their, their tent, their temporary tent on that site. And then ask for Westcott to come in, you know, once a year. And it doesn't have to necessarily be to council, but at least to provide some sort of documentation or report that says, you know, they, that they're still looking at marketing that parcel and what the market is for the commercial development of that particular parcel. And that we would also consider after that two-year period to grant an additional three years. And really what this grants is them time to, to allow the market factors, to allow the development of that site under market conditions, so that they don't have to come in with a commercial development application, literally right, you know, right now or today. As an example, that it would allow them a little bit more time to do that. I have asked Westcott for a commitment in writing so that we have something that memorializes our agreement with them. So if there are any questions from council, I can take them. I know that Ms. Davies is also in, in the meeting as well. So if you have any questions that you'd like to ask her, she's here as well. Thank you, council and mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Thomas or Ms. Davies? Councilmember Lengel?
I'm just looking at your slide. So without seeing whatever the written documentation is, I'm in a disadvantage. But just submitting a market analysis, is it, is your wording, has to be acceptable to the city? How's that worded?
So let me reshare it really quick. It, it wasn't that it was acceptable to the city because I didn't know how to define what was acceptable to the city. And I had, I had talked to Daniel about that as well. And, you know, working, I guess, in collaboration with them to me was really important. And they know how important it is to us to get a market analysis and to get a marketing update every year. So I didn't, I, I wasn't able to define, to define it in that way. I really wanted, I wanted to, but maybe, you know, Daniel, you can weigh in as well. But it was difficult to define what, what that would be.
So yeah, I would agree. And I think one, one way that that was kind of addressed, at least in my view, is that it's only a two-year extension. So they would be needing to hit those marks in a way that's acceptable to the city in order to get the additional three years. That's still something that would need to be approved by the city. And so if, if the reports aren't coming in in a way that makes sense and that works to establish what the city needs, they're not doing what, what would get them the additional time should, should they need it. Maybe they wouldn't, but that's one way to look at it.
Can I finish my comment? I, I'm, I'm fine with the two-year extension. I'm uncomfortable with the idea of a three-year additional. I'll just leave it at that. And, and partly because we have been very generous with time with Westcott. And I want to support DFA because I think they're trying really hard to make their project work. But I, I don't want, I'm very, I'm uncomfortable with the three-year. And I'll tell you one reason is because we're supposed to have this job growth. And so we're getting pressured kind of from two different directions. We need commercial development if we're going to have job growth near residential. And, and so I, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. I'm fine with the two-year extension. I'm less- I, um, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. I'm fine with the two-year extension. I'm less fine with three years additional.
Thank you. Um, council member Napland.
I also feel comfortable with the two years. Um, I think we should, I mean, I think another three-year extension as a possibility is reasonable, but I don't feel like we should obligate ourselves in any way, which I don't, I don't think that we are, but I think at this point, two years is reasonable and, uh.
Thank you. I guess, um, to make it quicker, is there anybody that objects to the two years and what's been said already? I'm not seeing any. So it looks like we have relative consensus to bring this back, um, at another meeting for approval. Oh, Ms. Thomas, you're on mute.
Thank you, council. I did want to just bring up, I was able to pull up the agenda bill really quick for council member Lingle. And so, uh, I just wanted to make sure that you were, you were able to see what the conditions were. And then I can definitely talk to you offline as well. Um, I can tell you that I am working, um, right now with one of our other developers, Toll Brothers. And, uh, I've been talking to them about their marketing and market analysis for the property adjacent to Big Rock Road. And they think it's really ripe for development. And so they're going to come in and, uh, start to talk. I shouldn't say right, right now, but it's like, it's, we're getting to a place where it looks like, um, they have some good news for us, I guess is what I'll say. So I was really excited about that. And I wasn't going to quite share it yet, but because we're talking a little bit about market, you know, market analysis and marketing, I thought I'd just give you that quick share. So thank you, council members.
Thank you. And with that, um, we will go ahead and move on to our next agenda item. Um, it's agenda bill 20 dash 119B, approve resolution temporarily reducing Big Rock Ballfield rental fees in response to the COVID pandemic and establishing an effective date and expiration. This is for discussion and our decision. It's a second touch, so rules would need to be suspended. Um, it's, I, from recollection of our last meeting, I think we're pretty much all on board with this. Um, so I would be happy to either have a discussion or entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Mayor Mike Remington, uh, I would move that we suspend our three-touch rules on this item so we could move forward on a vote.
Is there a second?
Second, Brad Nicky.
All right. We have a motion by Mayor Partem-Remington and a second by council member Brad Nicky to suspend the three-touch rule. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain a motion on the underlying bill.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that council approve agenda bill 20 dash 119B, approve resolution temporarily reducing the Big Rock Ballfield rental fees in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and establish an effective date and expiration.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, McHenry.
Great. We have a motion by Mayor Partem-Remington, uh, second by council member McHenry to approve the COVID ball rates. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mayor Mike Remington?
Yes.
I, I'm trying to remember. We had a discussion about, uh, when this would end and we had said that, or the, I mean, the original language said when the pandemic ended that they would come back. And there was some concern that, you know, the, the governor might say, hey, everyone's been vaccinated, pandemic's over, but the impacts of the pandemic may not have gone away. And I, I believe, uh, I, I had been told that, um, that the mayor here could say, hey, you know, we still have the impact and continue with these reduced fees, uh, to support the community. Uh, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly so that we wouldn't necessarily be tied to what the mayor or what the governor, uh, did with the pandemic, but would have the ability to, uh, evaluate that as a council moving forward.
Yes. Um, I'll ask for Mr. Kenny's confirmation on that. That was our belief at the last meeting. Um, so Daniel, if you have any, um, input to provide, that would be fantastic.
Yeah. I mean, i- it does just say, uh, the declared pandemic. So I think that could be interpreted as, um, an authority that declares it either the mayor or the governor. And so it would not be necessarily tied to the governor.
And mayor, the one whereas clause talks about six-month increments and when the mayor ends the declared pandemic.
Yep.
And we're fair, see?
I think we've done our, our due diligence, but it's an excellent question to ask. Anyone else? Seeing none. Oh, council member Napland.
I don't see it specifically addressed. Maybe I missed it, but the concern would be is if a league scheduled or set their fees based on, you know, unexpected discounted rate, and then suddenly it's not discounted. I know it's six-month increments. Is that correct, Steve? So how do we, I mean, I think little league would all fall within one six months. That kind of what you're thinking that the different leagues would fall within each month, not that problem.
Well, I, I think our expectation is that when you make an agreement with the leagues, it stands. Um, so you set a rate because we all know that they, the leagues set the prices for their registration based on rental fees, et cetera. Um, so the expectation there is that that would stand, um, through their reservation time. Um, Mr. Lenishewski, correct me if I'm wrong. And if we have to do an amendment, that's okay with me too. But that's, I, I don't, I don't think we would, I, it would not be our intent to raise rates in the middle of the season.
Right.
Uh, but it, I mean, there's also the expectation, we know that, um, the majority of the population is going to be able to be vaccinated by late spring. Um, that doesn't completely reduce the risk, but it, we might be back to more and more normal times and we should be able to have advanced projection of that in theory. Um, so if we did look three months down the road and it looks like, hey, we might be closer back to normal by June, then that's something we could build into our conversations with the leagues, um, in our informal evaluation as well, I would think. Um, Steve, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's a, it's a good point and there isn't a lot of clarity written into this. So maybe with Daniel's discussion here, um, I'm not sure, you know, I understand how fees work relative to vesting and land use, but I'm not sure how a fee would work if it was reduced. And to the council member's point, um, you know, we move past baseball into June when soccer starts to book, um, for the fall and the summer. So if we have this in effect, then we're saying, well, we're going to look at this in June and I'm un- unknown at this time if this is going to be effective. And maybe it's part of our operation where we, we have it, we have an existing fee structure. We also have this COVID reduction. We are just upfront and I don't know if we have to add a, a, a whereas in here or a section in here, but that you don't vest to fees. Just, I mean, we don't want somebody to come in tomorrow and book the fields to take advantage. We understand the user groups and the intent here is for the youth, so, um, of our community, um, to support. So certainly could change the wording a bit. And even if we had to work on it and put it on the next meeting, I don't think, you know, we're going to be booking January 1 through January 5, you know, we can't avoid a meeting. And I don't want to maybe craft something at the dais, but if, if the council is interested in that, again, January to end of June snapshot, because we all figure pretty well will be where we are today relative to the pandemic, even if we're close to being out of it. But yeah, none of us really know past that. And I wouldn't be sure at this point how to handle it, other than telling a, a potential, you know, renter that we have a regular rate established. Hey, if you're lucky enough, because they don't pay until the time of, um, use.
Well, the problem is, is they set their fees.
Sure.
Yeah.
Kids signing up. And I, I think that the intent is that we want to see this rate to be reflected in a reduced fee to the residents of our town. And a league would be unable to offer that lower rate if they weren't guaranteed. I mean, field costs are the majority of the, the expense that they have. So if they felt like, gosh, we have a risk that rates could go up halfway through our season, you know, I mean, they, they, it'd be very difficult for them to set rates. You know, a- anyway, I, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'd, I brought it up, I think, the last time, but I, I didn't see anything. And yeah, I just want to make sure that this reduced rate ends up reducing the registration fee to the residents in this city.
Well, I mean, again, we, we can't force the leagues to do that. That's just our, our preference. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm sure that leagues will honor that, but I just want to make clear that the city can't tell the leagues what rates, what rates they charge. But your point is well taken and I think we're all in agreement with that. I just want to make sure folks know, we as a group are not trying to set the league's rates for them. That's not what you were saying, but I just, I just want to.
Where they, that would be their intent, but it wouldn't be fiscally responsible of them if they don't know what.
Yeah.
Field rates are going to be, you know, that's what.
Yep. All right. Mayor Partem-Remington?
Uh, I see this is our third touch, but I also see there's some questions. And Steve, you mentioned, um, you know, bringing it back. If you don't think it has a, you know, a, a big impact waiting, that would give us a little time here to massage the language. Unless you, you think there's something we can pop in now and just move it forward. But I, I recognize it's getting late and, and sometimes that little extra time to massage the language is appropriate.
Yeah. I don't have any issue if we want to, um, if we want to, if someone wants to withdraw the motion and push it to the January 5th, and we'll just make a small amendment to make that, um, that fee structure a little more clear.
Mayor Mike Remington, I, I would move, uh, we withdraw the motion and bring it back, uh, early next year.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Do you have a second for that?
Second, Brad Nicky.
All right. Any further discussion on the withdrawal until the first meeting in January? Councilmember Napland.
Just, this is a fine hair thing, but, um, the only teams I think this would impact right now would be the baseball season, maybe lacrosse. I, I mean, if we know that we're going to have it extend at least the six months, I'm guessing these leagues want to figure out their pricing because they should be starting to register people. So I hate to kind of delay even further if we know at least that first six months is going to fall at the reduced rate. I just wanted to throw that out there because I do know that the, the different leagues are, are needing to set their rates.
Yeah, I, I, I hear that. I, I would say that, um, because we know this is happening and we know that there's already council consensus on the reduced rates. It's just cleaning up some language, um, that they should be okay with moving forward based on the conversation that the legislative bodies had. Does that make sense? Because I mean, I think everybody, if we, we're just identifying some fine tuning of the language, everybody's already in agreement that this is something we need to do. Um, so I think we can share that with the leagues and they can continue their work. I don't, for me, I don't see any risk of this ultimately not passing.
Okay. We just haven't had like a formal vote. So I'm assuming everyone.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't heard any objections, which normally we do by now. So, um, so we have a motion and a second for withdrawal. Um, seeing, um, no further discussion, all those in favor, withdraw until the January 5th meeting, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and we'll bring this back to the January 5th with just some minor amendments. Um, we are at nine 26, so I do need to ask for a motion to extend the meeting past nine 30.
So moved. Second, Michelle Hoag.
We have a motion by council member McHenry and a second by council member Hoag to extend the meeting past nine 30. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and we were close, folks. We've got two more items of business. So agenda bill 20 dash 108C, adopt ordinance, amending ordinance number 1264, which amended the 2019-2020 budget for the purpose of accounting for adjustments to revenues and expenditures, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. And this is the third touch for discussion and/or decision. Happy to entertain a motion, but you're welcome to have discussion as well. Unless folks want Dana to present again. If you want her to present again, we can have her speak.
Mayor Mike Remington, uh, I move that, uh, city council approve agenda bill 20 dash 108C, adopting ordinance, amending ordinance number 1264, which amended the 2019-2020 budget for the purpose of accounting for adjustments to revenues and expenditures, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second, McHenry.
We have a motion by Mayor Partem-Remington and a second by council member McHenry to, um, adopt agenda bill 20 dash 108C. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we're on to our final agenda item for the year, agenda bill 20 dash 100D, adopt ordinance, ad- adopting the biennial budget for the fiscal years 2021 and 2022, providing for severability and establishing an effective date for discussion and/or decision.
Mayor Mike Remington, I have a, a question about procedures. We had talked about amending the ordinance, uh, to include, uh, the budget notes, uh, since they had not been included prior. In terms of process, how do we do that? Do we do that now?
So you would, um, you need a motion on the floor. So we need a motion in a second on the budget, approving the budget. And then we would take the amendment to include the budget notes. Dana?
Like to share the, the section that was added?
Yeah. Well, I think, let's wait till we have a motion on the floor, I think, too. So we don't get confused.
And then there was, uh, it, there was one other suggestion that, um, the city attorney had recommended. Um, if we wanted to, we could add a full copy of the final adopted budget as well as the city's budget book is on file with the office of the city clerk.
Yep.
City clerk.
That, that always is the case, but it's just fine to stick it in the ordinance. So, um, but we still need a motion on the underlying motion before we can make amendments.
Well, Mayor Mike Remington, um, I, I think we've had plenty of discussion and, uh, but having said that, uh, by putting the motion on the floor, it would also allow us to have additional discussion if a council member prefers to do that. Uh, with that, um, I recommend that council approve agenda bill 20 dash 100D, adopting ordinance, adopt ordinance, adopting the biennial budget for the fiscal, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second, Brad Nicky.
We have a motion by Mayor Partem-Remington, a second by council member Brad Nicky. And so now's the opportunity for final discussion and to formally bring forth the amendments, um, as discussed at the committee hall and as, uh, provided by our city attorney.
Mayor Mike Remington, um, I recommend that we amend the ordinance to, uh, add the, um, budget notes or bring in the budget notes, um, to the ordinance. And in addition, um, uh, add a full copy of the budget book as well.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second, McHenry.
Great. Any discussion, um, by council on that? Uh, clerk?
Sorry, I just want to clarify with our city attorney really quick if that was, uh, sufficient for doing the actual amendment. We talked about reading the, um, actual amendments out loud for the record. So Dana, could you please pull up the revised ordinance and budget notes so that we could get those on the record?
So, um, I think because we're, um, recording this, I think it's properly, I, I've been thinking about that. I think reading it's probably too much. It is being recorded. It is, it is available. It is now currently on the screen. And so. And so the revisions in red, um, that the finance director just put up are the revisions. And then we can follow this very briefly with the budget notes themselves. Um, and I would ask Mayor Partem Remington if the revisions in red, followed by the budget notes, are consistent with your motion or that is your motion.
Yeah, they're exactly consistent with my motion.
And for the record, they, the in the 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 amendments will be in the minutes in full for the public record as well.
Thank you. Council member Hoag.
So on your, uh, amendment that you've made under section one, I'm wondering if we could say a full copy of the final line item adopted budget? Or?
Yep, that's fine. And that's what it would be at city hall, so that would be just fine.
I hope the rest of the council is okay with that.
It's how we produce it. I I I don't see any issues with that at all.
Would you like me to share the budget notes then?
Yes, please.
I think this is the way. I have to find them. Sorry, I had them up. There they are. Okay. Okay.
All right, is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to the budget as presented by Mayor Partem Remington, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, is there any further discussion on the budget as amended? Seeing none, um, this, if we have any division, we'll call for a roll call vote. If we don't have division, um, then we'll just go, um, based on the ayes. So with that, all those in favor of approving the budget, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, so yay. So I just want to say, um, thank you to everyone here, especially our staff and council. Um, this is our second biennial budget. There were some things that were easier, some things that were harder. But one thing that we've been able to do as a team and as a group is build on previous successes and build, start, really start building resilience into our budgeting process. Um, two years ago, we started by fully funding our contingencies and our reserves. This year, uh, with our finance director, we're able to update our equipment reserve and not just update the model, but also put additional money into that fund. Um, and building, um, starting our building maintenance reserve and really working to, um, start to plan out the future of the city. This budget has, um, our financial planning, our government facilities planning and so much more that we haven't been able to get done as a city. And it's taken a lot of really difficult conversations. Um, change is hard and we've had a lot of change in the last three years. Um, not to mention this pandemic has thrown everyone for a loop. It's created lots of stress for all of us personally and professionally. And everyone has, um, at the end of the day, come together to what I think is one of the best budgets, um, and most solid budgets the city's had, um, in probably at least twenty years. And we are focused on the right things. We're focused on our core priorities. We're focused on making sure that over time, we have the staff necessary to provide the services our community needs. And over time, making sure we have plans in place and the finances in place to maintain the infrastructure that we have and bring on new. Um, and I think also with this budget, we're seeing, um, council members more engaged at the regional level, um, which is going to yield major benefits to the city as a whole. And for that, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you um, for all of the work that went into us. We've had some tough conversations. We've had some arguments. Um, but at the end of the day, we've all come together for this, and I think it's a huge accomplishment. For the city, for the staff and for council, and really for our community, um, and seeing that we are long-term working to actually take care of everything that they've, that they need to keep them safe here. Um, and, uh, it's been a pretty amazing experience and we wouldn't have been able to do it without Ms. Mason, um, who brings a real common sense approach to the budget as well as a lot of expertise. Um, and our staff who've been amazing over the last few years, um, who filled in when we didn't have a finance director last year during the the um, mid-biennium. And, um, all of the planning that's gone forward, we're starting to see the results. And I I just want to thank each one of you for all of that and wish you all have merry, happy holidays, happy new year, and we will celebrate our successes in the new year now that there's a vaccine. And we have something really big to look forward to. We'll have an opportunity to celebrate those successes in the new year as well. So thank you all. And with that, unless there are objections, we are adjourned for the year. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Holidays.